Jeff, can I have your raps?
Yeah.
It's called to order the September 7th, 2023, regular meeting of the Ketchikan City Council. No, not that chair. There we go. Clerk will call the roll.
Finnegan.
Okay.
Here.
Gas.
Oh.
Here.
Flora.
It's not, it's not supposed to be, you should be worried.
Here.
Matani.
Here.
Bradbury.
Here.
Gage.
Oh, you're feeling guilty?
Here.
Kissler.
I don't feel guilty, it's a great thing, you know something we don't.
Here.
Please join us in pledging wisdom. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under our government and with the soul of the Constitution of Justice for all. The Ketchikan City Council would like respectfully acknowledge the fifth and first people of this land and Ketchikan, the tongue of this country. Under Communications, we have laid on the table from the manager regarding the promenade, and we also have a proclamation. Whereas mental and/or substance abuse disorders affect all communities nationwide, but with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives and recovery. And whereas personal recovery is a way of living, is satisfying, hopeful, and contributing life with even limitations caused by the illness. Whereas people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental and/or substance use disorders, they can help lead others who experience such disorders into needing treatment. And whereas by seeking help, people who experience mental health and/or substance abuse disorders can embark on a new path toward improved health and overall wellness for themselves and their families. And whereas by raising awareness of these diseases and educating our community about the prevention, treatment, and recovery resources that are available. Recovery Month and Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month observance works to improve the lives of those affected by mental health and/or substance abuse disorders. And whereas to help more people achieve and maintain long-term recovery, the city of Ketchikan encourages the Ketchikan community to participate in activities that aim to lower the stigma attached to substance abuse, use, and mental health disorders. And whereas therefore be it resolved that I, David Kiefer, Mayor of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim September as National Recovery Month. And hereby encourage the community members to recognize September as National Recovery Month and to participate in programs, activities, and ceremonies, including the Stomp the Stigma Recovery March and Resource Rally on Saturday, September 9th, 2023. Signed this 7th day of September, 2023. And do we have some people here to accept this? Say a few words.
Um, hello.
Hold on, is that live stream frozen?
Apparently so.
It is?
Well, let's keep going.
Okay.
We're not frozen.
We want to thank you guys for recognizing National Recovery Month for the sixth year in a row. We appreciate your guys' support. This year, we've invited people from the Car House Treatment Facility to be here with us. You guys are pretty used to hearing from me and Christine by now, but we want to remind you guys where we came from and also to show them that they matter and that their stories are important. They'll be reentering communities soon. Sorry. They will be reentering communities soon, and part of their success will largely be on us to not judge their past and to give them a second chance at life. I asked them to be here today so that they can see that people care, so they can see that our city council members are listening. When you see them on Saturday, when you guys all come out to the event, have a conversation with them, encourage them, and show them support, and let them know that they are valued. By doing so, you can make them feel like they can make an impact and change the way that you have done with Christine and I. One thing that we believe is that no one works harder in this field than an addict or alcoholic wanting to be of service to our communities. We will work like our lives depend on it because lives do depend on it. Thank you, guys.
As always, thank you guys for hearing us out, or, well, your safe. We really truly appreciate it. This event continues to grow and to become more special and more important, and our community is more aware of it every year. Last year, for the first time, we got statewide acknowledgement, which was really powerful and really, really awesome. But to me, is what is always most important is really urging the other community members, the people that maybe are not in recovery, that, all of you guys. I know not everybody, we all have our own lives, right, and we're all busy, but the importance it really has on people showing up in like full force to acknowledge that, yes, this is National Recovery Month. And I think it's really important to note that not only can we recover, but we do recover. But we don't do it alone. And the more, the further we are removed from society, which we get pretty far removed from society, the harder it is to crawl back. But when we have community members such as yourself, where people like us putting you guys on pedestals, even the police department, always, you know? And just, we really alienate ourselves from society, and we need society's help to come back. And, you know, not too many years ago, I was just like my friends right here, trying to start over, trying to fight back. And, and I've been really blessed that I got to start over in Ketchikan because you guys really have accepted me in a way that I thought you never would. And I just hope that we can continue that same pathway and that we continue to show people that there is a different way. Because unfortunately, the reality is, people are dying, and they're dying at a very, very alarming rate, and it's getting worse. Not even just every year, every day, it's getting worse. And the ripple effect from that, the losses that our community has, is tremendous, and I know some of you guys know personally. And it's heartbreaking. We need our community to continue to come together, to continue to love, to continue to try not to judge. That does not mean don't hold accountable. We should always be held accountable for our mistakes, but I think it's important to note that underneath all of our mistakes were being driven by a disease. And that disease causes us to do things that the real us would never, ever do. And with your guys' help and help from places like the Car House, and this whole event Stomp the Stigma, we get the opportunity to start over, to build a brand-new life. And, and that is harder if we are being judged and ridiculed. And, because I promise you guys that there is not anything that anyone could feel, say, or do that we haven't already done, felt, or said about ourselves. And so, that's really all I have. I hope to see new faces this year. And I just want to say that we have a very special guest speaker this year. Kara Nelson is coming home to tell her story back here for the first time ever. And for those of you that don't know, Kara grew up in Ketchikan, her whole story, the negative parts of her story were here, and she has done amazing things, not only in Alaska, but nationwide, to really lead the fight for recovery. And it is an absolute blessing that she's coming home to tell her story. So, I hope to see you guys there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Okay. Pause for a minute while the clerk gets the sign-up sheet today.
We only have Chief Walz signed it.
Okay. Chief Walz.
Welcome back to the Thunderdome. No, the reason I asked to be up here is that I wanted to introduce two new promotions. And the first one is Mike Purcell, who's our new lieutenant, who's taken over investigations. He was already in investigations. And it really says a lot, what we just talked about with the recovery part of this, because I tasked him with trying to keep Dylan safe. And that's helping those individuals who are addicted to drugs. And if you look at the, since they took over and took over that position, they had an increase, I said it last two days ago, 525% increase. That's 17,000 more pills that they took off the street, just alone in pills, that, that saves people's lives. I don't know how many lives they've saved by doing that, but we're focused on getting the dealers off the street, not the users, and who, most of those have developed an addiction, and they need help with that. And so, they've done a fabulous job, and it was, it's a great privilege to be able to promote somebody, and especially the work he did. Mike, can you come up? And there's another part of this. Just yesterday, he was chasing somebody down the street, making an apprehension on a theft. And, I mean, this is the, this is the kind of leadership that we want in the organization, and it's developed from within and promoted from within. So, just wanted to introduce him and let him say a few words if he wants. Mike?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, everybody here. I'm honored at this promotion. You know, I've been with the department for over 16 years. I love this town, this community, and, and that's, that's what drives me to do what I do. I want to do everything I can in my part, and nothing's going to change in that sense with this promotion, you know, just my, things will shift a little bit. I'll have to adjust a bit to the, I probably can't get in as many foot pursuits, probably.
We'll get you a bicycle.
But again, I just, you know, for me, it's going to be hopefully business as usual and just, you know, help reinforce the officers under me to be able to do their job the best of their ability. Thank you.
One last one is our first reserve officer, who's going to be a reserve coordinator. And that's Sergeant, Reserve Sergeant, Ron Elliott. And I just, what Ron does for us is amazing. He's always been there, he's always been dedicated, always been a tremendous help for us. The day that we promoted him, he was working on firearms, he was working on somebody's firearm for us to fix it. So, this is the type of cooperation and community development that we're really looking forward to. This is the first piece. He's our reserve coordinator. There's a whole process that we go through. It's same as tested for our officer. They have to go through psychological, the whole background checks and all that. And so, we're going to have three different levels, and we're planning on using this to even start off with 18-year-olds as cadets, basically, as volunteers. And I think it goes to do the ride-alongs, senior ride-alongs, kind of using that kind of, that kind of platform to start them off and use them for, once they pass the background and all that. Use, use those volunteers to just get them in the door and start recruiting from within. You know, we're competing against, you know, we are competing against them across the pond here, let's say, for $4 an hour difference. And this is one ways we do it, is just trying to develop from within the community and build our manpower and, so this is where we're at. So, I'd like to thank Ron for stepping forward and being one to do this, so, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I could say something.
City Council and Mayor Kiefer, thank you for this opportunity. KPD has offered me as a reserve officer. Again, this is, again, like Jeff said, is in our infancy. We don't really have a, a rolling start, more or less, and we got, we're kind of putting it together as we go. I'm just happy to, you know, provide for these guys another service, again, to my community. You know, have been a baseball coach for eons and scouts, and of course, my kids are now basically gone and grown up. Something else here I can go back to the community with. I thank you for that, and hopefully we put together a pretty good program, so, yeah, thank you.
Explain to the reserve, what a reserve officer is. And they, they're a volunteer, you know, just basically a volunteer. We have three levels. We have a Level 1, a Level 2, and a Level 3. Level 1 is, will be a reserve who, officer who may have retired from the police department or AST or another, another police department in good standing that still is certified and can actually put them on the street as a reserve. A volunteer, they have to do 12 hours a month, which is that helps add that manpower when we're lacking in places. And then Level 2 would be someone like Ron, who doesn't have prior law enforcement experience. Now, they'll have to go through the whole training. They do the whole of our defensive tactics, shooting, all those qualifications. Search and seizure, different, different aspects, legal aspects, and, and they'll go through that training, and they'll be assigned to an officer, a resident officer. So, they'll be paired up with an officer, and when they go out on the street, they'll assist them. So, if we have domestic call, and we have a volunteer, they'll be riding with that officer. And then we have that, so you have that two-man backup, and they'll be trained just as the other officers are. And then the Level 3 would be someone who's 18 or wants to volunteer, who's older but doesn't want to be in uniform or anything of that nature. And they'll do, help us in all the different clerical and other issues, and they even direct traffic or do ride-alongs. They can do ride-alongs with us as well. There should be eyes and ears, kind of, to say. So, that's what we have going and reporting. This is the first piece. This is our coordinator, and then we'll go from there, so. Thank you all. Thank you for your time. Thank you for letting me.
Did anyone else want to address the council tonight on the subject? Seeing that, we will close person to be heard. Moving on the consent agenda, I have had a request to remove three items from the consent agenda and put them back onto, on the new business. One is 5B ordinance 2376, one is 5D procurement of solid waste division 2025 international hook truck. And then 5G budget transfer, KPU Division Manager, that's all been said. And actually, I would like to also, while we're doing this, move item 7B, use of berth 3 visitor center building, to consent agenda. Any other changes?
Your Honor, I would like to suggest 6A appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay. So Chair, I want to hear your motion. I don't think it's entered.
Say it again.
Move the second. So we're discussing 5A, 5C.
5B?
5B.
Well, actually, yeah, 5, 7, 7B.
What are we voting on? Let's just start there.
Yeah, that's, that's what, I'm trying, trying to make sure we're all voting over the consent agenda. So that's, so, so 5A. 5C. 5F. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, I scratched that up. 5E, 5F. 5H. 6A. And 7B. Discussion?
7B?
Yeah, the, the use of berth 3 visitor center building. We're going to move that, removing that to consent.
That we're going to direct staff?
Well, I'm not sure there was. Well, we're.
There's no direction.
Yeah, there's no direction.
Oh.
Because it's, it doesn't have anything in the motion, so we can't move it to consent.
Let's save that, let's save that one.
I ask those three items to be moved to new business because two items are, will affect the public directly. And the third one is just a transfer from one account to the other from the electric division, just want the electric division manager to explain that so the public knows what's going on with the monies that we have.
We'll get those moved. Discussion on the items that are currently consent. You're in on, clerk, oral. Actually, I'm just, clerk will read the items first.
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of August 17th, 2023, ordinance number 2319, nope, I didn't say that. Budget transfer, KPU Water Division telecommunications, procurement of the solid waste division 2000.
Nope, nope, not that one either.
Sorry. I'm going to, so we have approval of minutes, the budget transfer for KPU Water Division.
Yes.
We have successor master service agreement between the City of Ketchikan, DVA, Ketchikan Public Utilities, and City West Cable and Telephone Corporation. A budget transfer, KPU Water Division, the 42-inch wall, raw water transmission main extension, and the liquor license renewal application for Northwestern Ventures LLC, DVA, Ketchikan Crab and Grill. And the appointments to boards and commissions by Mayor Kiefer.
Yes. Quick, we'll call it all.
Gage?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Kissler?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
And Gas?
Yes.
Push the best. Okay. Yeah, moving on to new business. We decided to make the other ones like B, C, D, and E, or?
Yeah, we'll just leave them after A and B, because we were going to leave it, but since we didn't.
Okay.
We'll leave these two and then move those other.
Got it, got it. Okay. So, item 7A, alternative 2023 port projects. Chair, I want to hear your motion.
Your Honor, I move the city council authorized staff to pursue alternate capital improvement projects for the Fort of Ketchikan as to be named by the city council.
Move the second. Discussion.
Yeah, so reviewing the list of projects here, obviously, we're just, it's not a whole lot of money. You know, we just have a little bit of money that needs to get spent in a timely fashion. My thoughts on the project, or the money, would be to fix the promenade issue that we dealt with this year. Just because that is a corridor between our berth 4 and the other three docks in a passenger way. And then, I don't believe that project would take up all the funding, if I am correct. And so then I was thinking possibly putting the rest of the funding towards, one, a survey of the cathodic protection on berth 1 and 2. Because it's been a lot on our topic, but we don't know the extent of how bad it really is. And I think it would be important to know that now, as well as maybe there's potential to get some grant funding if it is worse than we think it is. And then, I'm sorry, after the money is spent to that point, the rest of that go into cathodic protection for the worst pilings on 1 and 2. And just start chipping that away. I don't think we'll ever be able to afford the whole project, but if we can get the worst ones and start just crossing them off and then start a maintenance plan from there. So that's kind of what my thoughts were on them, the fund, just that, 2 million, I believe.
Mr. Gaston, Mr. Ford.
Um, so, reading this, my understanding is basically we're supposed to direct staff on which projects to start on. And that, I'll be honest, I think I would trust the staff to make that decision better than us, so. I'm all for the conversation, but if, I think that's kind of more in their wheelhouse.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Gas, if, what I want to clarify is, the reason we have to bring it to you is because you appropriated this project and the budget. So, of course, that recommendation would be for staff to come back with those proposals. I just want to make that clear for council, that we would come back with a proposal to reappropriate the funds.
You just want to know right now what we think in terms of that.
Right.
If we have a strong opinion, you know.
Absolutely.
Mr. Ford?
I think Councilmember Gas and Bradbury both have good points as far as letting the port director handle the operations. I kind of had the order the same as Councilmember Bradbury. We don't know the price of the repair of the promenade, correct? That's, that's an unknown?
That's correct.
Okay. The reason I asked for lot 7A was the only source of that kind of scour in this area is the cruise ships themselves. So as we go forward with this project, I'd like to give our cruise ship partners an opportunity to have another bite at an apple, just a different apple. And I'd like to know if the council has the will to maybe ask them to participate, since the cruise ships were a participant in the erosion of seven feet of overburden. Anybody?
Yes.
I do.
I agree totally.
Yeah, I, I don't object to that whatsoever. I just worry about how fast that we need to move through it. I just. I'm just saying, if we're going, if we have a timeline, this is the second time we're trying to get that timeline, and if we wait on them, I just, unfortunately, I don't think. I don't think the money's going to get spent, and it's not going to do damage, so, that's it. I do totally, fully support that whole statement, and I think we should do both. Go, you know, we should bring it up, so.
To add to that, I think due to the history, we have a water wall that runs from this part down.
You mean the, you mean the shipwreck?
The, yeah, the shipwreck that blocks the, kind of protects the down, down area from some of that propeller. And honestly, at some point, we're talking all the way down through the old Ellis Building, probably further down with these bigger ships. It needs to be considered that if, if we're going to ask the cruise industry to partner again, I don't have any faith. But at the end of the day, they're the ones that are eroding the properties that go all the way down, and that wall probably needs to be extended and needs to be looked into to protect people's property.
Mr. Gas?
Just a comment that came to mind, listening to Mr. Flora and Mrs. Bradbury. It sounds like maybe using this money that has to be spent in a timely manner, maybe ought to be focused on one of the other projects, such as berth 3, cathodic protections or something else. So that we have more time to go to our friends at the cruise lines about the promenade, you know what I mean? Like, I'm in favor of doing both, then we don't have to worry so much about them dragging their feet on this particular one.
At least the part that we have to spin down.
I'm just curious why this happened and whether there's some liability to whoever designed it. I mean, it's not that old, and this should not have happened. Why is it happening? And was there some way that, to stop it from happening in the future, and that it was not designed well to start with that would make this happen?
Counselor Kissler and Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, I don't know. We'll have to actually go back and, and look at that analysis. I'm not sure how old the promenade is or what it was designed for. And the reason I say that is we have a completely different number of ships today than we did even 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, or 20 years ago. So I'm not sure what the design standard was or at that level, or even with the thruster frame, if that was even a consideration. So, so I don't know without some sort of engineering analysis of what it was built to. The promenade itself is not in immediate danger of falling over or anything like that, but it does have to be stabilized for future stability, if that makes sense.
If I recall PND's recommendation, which is part of your laid-on-table, I believe that is part of the consideration. It's reinforcing the concrete and some steel stable bars, crossbars, and I apologize, I'm not the technical person going through it, but I know that is a consideration in the future plans of what they're recommending.
And I would just, if I could just add that I agree that, that we have a time, there was a, what, three month suggestion on getting that done? Is that right, three to six months? So I, I think that is a priority and the cathodic protection, I think also.
Mr. Ford and Mr. Gas.
Solid point.
It's good.
Solid point on the timing. So for sure, we should proceed. It's coming up on its seventeen-year anniversary. I'm not a maritime expert, but I'm an adventurer guest. Seventeen years ago when it was put in, the ship size and the azopod size was not, was not of such a scope as to cause these types of events. Councilmember Gage also has a good point. We had discussions with property owners a few years back before the pandemic. We saw videos of what actually occurs when those ships leave, come in and leave. My only point to bringing it up, yes, we certainly shouldn't wait on them as far as delay, but since we know the cause, if it's this project or another, we all know that port funds are really scarce, really challenged, and parties that benefit should just be parties that contribute. That's really my, my larger point. One last comment as far as priorities. I'm really concerned with this, the berth one, berth two cathodic protection thing. We've been talking about this one for seven years. I did have a discussion with the port director today. I believe the analysis wouldn't, I think it would be somewhat of a limited analysis to revisit the worst sections of one and two and get a comparison seven years ago to present, and I think it's about forty-nine thousand dollars. But everything tourism, cruise ship tourism related starts right out there, and if we have substantial problems with that, everything benefits from that is gonna suffer an enormous impact that we can't afford. So, I, I do think getting at least the analytical portion done really soon would be prudent because that will define not only costs, but how urgent our, our timeline is going forward. Thanks, Your Honor.
Mr. Gaston.
I was gonna ask if we could hear from the ports and harvest director specifically on Ms. Kissler's question about possible warranty. And
I didn't think it.
Seems of that nature.
I didn't say, oh, cool.
Sorry, I didn't hear Councilman Kissler's question.
Basically, it seems like it was a design flaw that we had this problem with the promenade and is there any recourse to the designer to?
Well, I don't know that it's necessarily a design flaw. You know, that was built over ten years ago, and like we said, the thrusters, the ship sizes were different, the thruster size, azopods were different. I don't think it's necessarily a design flaw in, in the whole scheme of things. You know, I think it's an unintended consequence of the ship, the number of ships and the size of ships that, that have, the industry has grown into. You know, we have, we've had several issues with thruster wash over the years in affecting boats and city float. But, you know, when you consider that there's between seven and eight feet of overburden that is missing from underneath the promenade, that's quite alarming on a lot of different levels. You know, so I, I don't think, i- in my opinion, it's not a design flaw that we can trace back to the engineering firm that designed it. I think it's, I say, I think it's an unintended consequence of industry growth.
Thank you. Could I follow up?
Yes.
So, since you're up here, if you were in our shoes, do you have any advice for us on which projects are at the top of your list?
Well, most definitely, I'm gonna agree with the engineers who came up to check out the, the, the promenade when we had that issue, and their recommendation is that that be fixed within the next six months. You know, so, number one, that north end of the promenade, that slope needs to be destabilized and, and shored up. And from there, I would look at corrosion protection for the promenade and berth three, just because those are, you know, those are thirteen, fourteen years old now, fourteen years old, and industry recommends that after ten years, you start putting corrosion protection on those pilings after they're after, about ten years after it's built. You know, there are some, berth one and two corrosion protection definitely needs to be looked at again, as well as in talking with Mark Hilson, Public Works, you know, underneath the parking deck over here, right, right behind you guys, there's lots of steel pilings or galvanized pilings that, as far as Mark knows, have never been surveyed. So he wanted to get with me that if we have a project coming forward to do an inspection of berth one, two city float, you know, the promenade, that we try to wrap this parking deck in there as well for a survey, because if nothing has been done on those pilings, you could be, it could be bad. I mean, I don't know. And Mark didn't know, but the corrosion protection and, and the promenade would be right at the top of my list.
Thank you. Mr. Gage.
Yeah, I think it was two thousand seventeen. Property owner came to our meeting and showed us a video of what the thrusters do to the under berth of our community. That's not a warranty issue. That is a thruster issue. There's a reason why these larger ships aren't even allowed in other countries because of those thrusters and what they've done to places like Italy and Puerto Rico, some of the reefs and different areas, and I actually could send everyone the videos again that show what the thrusters do to the what keeps us on the ground. At the end of the day, they're ultimately responsible if they want to bring big ships, but they're, that's, this is the number one reason. We don't need bigger ships. We don't need bigger ships. You know.
Yeah, and unfortunately, that's the way the industry is going. The ships are just getting bigger and bigger.
I'll take the small ships over this whole thing.
Yeah, so after comments from the ports and harvest director and Councilmember Flora, promenade, I, I think, has the most immediate need that we know of. But then, I'm, I think we need a full survey. I mean, I think we should use those funds to really figure out what's happening underneath there. As he, it pours me that some of them haven't even been looked at, and that's scary as well because they carry a lot of weight. And they are right there and they, they get impacted more than the promenade that would from the thrusters, so I'm almost thinking, you know, get the promenade going and then put, if you need more funds to get that full assessment of that whole waterfront to see where we're at, I would be for that as well because ultimately we're just gonna keep putting out fires until we know where the fire potentially could happen, and then maybe we can also talk to, you know, the the state and whatnot and trying to help if it is in really bad shape. I know they did a couple other peers up north because of the erosion and the cathodic protection situation, so it might, I mean, if we can get some help with that from the cruise line or from the state or anyone really, or any grants out there, I think it would be good, but I think we would need a full assessment of our true condition of our, our berths here and the harbor to really know, know what that is, so. I'm almost maybe doing promenade and then a corrosion protection, you know, fund, because I don't want this money to fall into, you know, something else. I want it to go towards an actual project to figure out how we can move forward.
At the very least, getting a, a better, a better baseline will help us because we as, as we found out when the ship broke the dock over there and we had just, we had just spent, you know, we just surveyed the underwater pilings. As you remember, the first word from cruise line was, those were damaged before, and we had photographs from years ago, and here they are. I think we need to really get, even in terms of, 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 of issues dealing with the the bow thrusters, we need to get an assessment so that two or three years from now, we can say, look, this, this has happened, this is, it's happened now. This, this wasn't something that happened thirty years ago or fifteen years ago, because that's their fallback. It's not them. And even when it came up in two thousand seventeen, the first words that came out came from the industry was, we're not doing that. That's not us. So, yeah, I think we, I think you're right. We, we need to, we need to get a baseline, all this stuff, at the very least, so we can say, look, here's where it is now, and if it changes the next year, guess who, guess who's responsible? Any other questions?
Just one off, so side note to that, it can, and the big cruise ship thing, you know, if we look at our, our berths and we see some major issues, we also need to let them know, like, hey, these, this pressure of this big ship or these type of azopods, whatever aspects of a ship, we can't have it docking in this area because it, the liability, not just to the ships, but to the citizens who are there. I mean, it could be a trickle-down effect if anything were to happen, so I just, I think you're right, getting that information and then utilizing it to make sure that we protect our asset as much as we can until we can figure it out.
Other questions for the ports and harvest director?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I can summarize, then our council direction would be, and I know you would have to do this in a motion to give us final direction, would be to pursue the projects as recommended, focusing on the promenade, corrosion protection, and waterfront assessment of infrastructure. Sound? Summary?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion with those, with those specific changes on them? Or do, or do you need them?
I, I think we do. It would be good to have a motion to close out the action, to amend the motion to include that. I would like to amend the motion to include, number one, promenade. I just closed out of it, I'm so sorry. The promenade option, promenade north, rock slope. Option number, number two project is corrosion inspection and protection for, or corrosion inspection of the entire birthing, first.
Port.
There we go. Port and harbor infrastructure, because I want to make sure that harbor gets it as well. And then number three, corrosion protection.
Second.
Discussion. For cool roll.
Finnegan?
Yes.
What, graph?
Yes.
And this is why I'm making sure you go past nine.
Matani?
Yes.
Gage?
It's Django. Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Kissler?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
And the middle.
That was.
That was the amendment, right?
That was the amendment.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment, do you, or do you consider that a dispository?
You could say since that's the direction given, we can consider that the main motion.
Ah, let's just, let's, let's vote the main motion.
Okay. Should we try it again? Gas? We're voting on the main.
Yes.
Yeah, the amended main motion.
The amended main motion. Gage?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Kissler?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Okay. Item seven B, use of berth three visitor center building, Chair willing to take a motion.
Your Honor, I move the city council direct staff regarding the use of the berth three visitors information center building by the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau.
You want to amend that, we have to do it twice?
I have to agree with myself.
Okay. Okay, so how, how do we want to do, do, to, direct staff?
This clarification, is this just until the new lease comes back to us, or is this like future?
This is just, just, just now through the end of the season.
Okay. I mean, I don't necessarily agree with this. It being used for this, I don't think it's necessary. I think it would be better used to service the visitors. But I understand staffing is an issue. They don't want to leave it unattended, so if this is it, I guess it's fine. We're probably still not going to use it, but it's there. Definitely would not want to see it moving forward being used as this. I think there's more pertinent, especially at the city level that we could take it back and use it, but it's.
And then as the whatever you call me on the, on the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau. The liaison. I know that this was not, this is not expected to be a permanent thing at all, never intended for any kind of permanency. It's just, you know, it's sitting there empty, and these people are out in the weather doing these things, and, and why not utilize it at least for something, because staffing, it, it's terrible. They still haven't got an administrative person and/or build the TBMP administrator. So there's just no way it could be staffed, so at least it's being used for something.
Mr. Flora.
Yeah, based on the manager's memorandum for the current lease for the balance of the season, I would think this would be an acceptable use.
Yeah, my, my main concern initially was, you know, how, you know, it appeared like this was, and I was like, no. Short-term, we can, we can live, we're not making a permanent change though about the council winning it. Further discussion? Actually, we, we, we need to amend this, to do something, because all, all we're doing now is, let me see, directing staff regarding the use, we're not saying what?
Mr. Mayor, actually, if you just want it to continue as, as agreed upon for the remainder of the lease, lease period.
Okay.
You know, as outlined in my memo, that would be sufficient. And if the council doesn't have, actually, technically, if you have no further direction, there's really nothing to be done. Like, the decision, if you're just gonna continue with what's already happening, then it really doesn't require a change, but if you want to memorialize it, that it can be used for this purpose only for the remainder of this lease period, then that's an even better bet.
It's probably.
I'm questioning to the mayor for the manager, where is our new tourism director going to be next month? Where is her office?
Uh, Councilman Bradbury, Mr. Mayor, she'll actually be in city hall for at least the first month. We have some space up on the and then we're working on a permanent home. So, right now, we just, we have her coming into city hall.
And then where, does Craig have an office and where is that office?
I believe it's at the harbor's building, but I'd have to defer to that. That's correct? It is. Craig, yeah, I just wondered, one, does he have an office and two, where is he?
Yeah, he has an office upstairs at the harbor office.
Harbor office, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's switch to the council. You want to just let it ride?
Let it ride.
Or you want to specifically?
Right.
Okay. Staff has direction, northwest. Okay, so that moves us back to well, now is seven C, which used to be five B. Ordinance number twenty-three seventy, nineteen seventy-six, amending chapter eleven point one-two telecommunications service and rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. First reading, Chair willing to take a motion.
Your Honor, I move that the city council approve and first reading ordinance number twenty-three dash one nine seven six, amending chapter eleven point one-two telecommunications service and rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, providing for public hearing and establishing an effective date.
Move to second discussion.
I cannot support this because, again, we are going after citizens and asking them to pay more, and the winter is coming up. It's gonna be a harsh winter. The electric and oil bills are gonna be heavy. I think this is not the time to raise the rates.
Um, can we get clarification from, I believe telecommunications is here. Just the reason behind why the increase. I know that that's here and I think I understand it, but I would just like to hear.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bradbury, the reason we're looking to do the, this rate. Sorry. I'm Claire, Assistant Telecom Division Manager. The reason we're looking at increase of rates is because the, our content fees have increased dramatically over the past several years. And, and our rates haven't kept up with that, those increases. This, this increase will amount to about five dollars per package or per customer with the five percent increase. And it'll help offset a little bit of the increased content cost. But of course, you know, it's still not going to keep up with the total. And so help a little bit with the revenue on that for twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-four, we're expecting further increases in content fees. We're in the process of negotiating those now. But from the way things are looking, they're, they're not going down. So they're continuing to increase.
Mr. Mayor, if I can expand on that, the, the content fees, if we don't increase the rates from the user, the end user, that means some other part of the division is subsidizing somebody's television subscription.
Yeah, nor, I mean, you all know how I am on rates, but this, this isn't a necessity that people have. It's not electric. It's not water. It's not those things that people have to have to survive. So I will move forward with this. I understand the cost of that, but also people can choose if they want a TV or not. Or if they want to pay internet and watch stuff on. That's up to them. It's a luxury. It's not absolutely essential.
Mr. Gibbs?
I agree. And I don't think it would be right to have another, you know, rate pairs of another service subsidize the TV. I think it needs to be able to pay for itself. So, don't like it, but I would agree with it. The only thing I would request going forward respectfully to the managers. If we have increases going forward, can we not get those on consent, please? Just so we can discuss them.
Absolutely.
Anything, anything's in first reading, we probably should have it.
Okay. Absolutely.
Further discussion?
I, I had the same thought as Ms. Bradbury. And further, if there's going to be another rate hike coming down the pike, I'd rather there be two smaller incremental rate hikes than one larger rate hike next year. So I don't have any objection to this, same reasoning as Ms. Bradbury.
With coral.
Matani?
No.
Yes. Benigan?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. Moving on to the procurement of solid, wait, is that, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, procurement, right? Problem is I, I, I circled, scratched it out and circled it again. So I can't read my notes anymore. Procurement of solid waste division twenty twenty-five international hook truck and budget transfer RCW group. Chair Lawrence had a motion.
Your Honor.
Yeah, that was a mistake.
I move that the City Council authorize the procurement of a replacement hook truck for the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code under Sourcewell Contract Number zero six zero nine two zero dash MVS through RCW Group on, in amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and establishing a contingency of five hundred dollars for the total cost of one hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. Authorize a budget transfer in the amount of eight thousand and two hundred dollars from the solid waste division in twenty twenty-three, recycling minor capital machinery and equipment account number seven nine zero point two five and twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars from the division's cover generation capital account to the division's hook truck replacement capital account. Approve funding in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars from the solid waste divisions twenty twenty-three hook truck replacement capital account and direct the city manager to execute the purchase contract documents on behalf of the City Council.
Second.
Yeah, um, y'all know you're not going to live down this fire truck thing. So this fund is programmed in the budget. Yes, it is a few thousand dollars over. It is, from my understanding, a very important piece. It can be used in various ways. And we never do anything for public work. So let's give them this vehicle since they already programmed it.
Would you like to hear from either the manager or the public works representative? Did they do due diligence to keep it at the budget that we had authorized?
Mr. Mayor, Council Matani, absolutely. Actually, the purchasing contract was a lot less expensive than when we were calling around for bids. So on some of the bid document, our bid attempts, we're finding that if the chassis is not available, they won't even give you a price. You have to put a down payment just to secure a chassis and then get a price. But the Sourcewell contracts, because those are a national bid document, it does come in with a much more competitive resource.
Thank you.
I have to ask this, what's the point of a five hundred dollar contingency?
Shipping. So we don't have to come back to you in case there's an extra shipping involved.
Cigarette holder, couple, something on hundreds of pounds.
We'll get the shipping quote and then some weird thing happens and we have to come back to council for five hundred bucks.
Okay, that's fine. Further discussion? Mr. Gibbs?
Yeah, I'm, I struggle with this one too. We're going over budget quite a bit and I know it's, you know, it's always just, oh, well, it's not that big of a deal, but at some point it is that big of a deal. So I just, I'm a little torn on that. It's a lot of money and that's what concerns me is going over budget that much. So.
Further discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Matani?
No.
Yes, sir?
Yes.
Benigan?
Yes.
Gas?
No.
Gage?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yep.
Motion passed. Moving on to budget transfer, CP electric division management and consulting services. Chair Lawrence had a motion.
Your Honor, I move the City Council authorize and transfer, a transfer of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Electric Division's twenty twenty-three technical services account number six three five dot one-two to the Electric Division's twenty twenty-three management and consulting services account number six four zero dot zero four.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Mr. Gibbs?
Uh, in the recent months, AKA this whole year, I've learned a lot about FERC. They're not the easiest people to work with. They're very stringent. And it costs a lot of money to get a license. FERC licenses are also required to be able to operate our dams. I look at a hundred and fifty thousand compared to what SEPA is having to do for their FERC licenses. And a hundred and fifty thousand is a drop in the bucket compared to what it could be. It is a lot of money. I'm glad to see that this is a transfer versus find us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we don't really have. So I appreciate that fact. Also, it's something that you need to get ahead of. And if we can secure a good consultant for this, that can help streamline the FERC and cut down our costs long-term, because FERC can come back and say, you know, you've got to change this, or you've got to build this. And it's going to cost us millions of dollars to fix it. So we want the best of the best. Before being on SEPA, I would totally probably skimp on this, but I've learned it's not an option if we want a dam.
Yeah.
Mr. Tull?
The reason why I bought it out of consent agenda is I'd like the Electric Division head to explain to us it's a transfer and how the transfer is being done so that the public knows what's going on.
Mayor, Council, Matt Clark, Manager, Jeremy Vine, Electric Division Manager. I'm here to talk a little bit about what we're asking for. So as we go throughout the year, things will come up where we need professional services. Some of those items would include FERC related. For clarification, with our FERC relicensing, we have two projects going on for relicensing Beaver Falls, which we're about ready to close out, and we're about ready to embark upon Ketchikan Lakes. Our process through relicensing will be millions of dollars. But along with that come things through inspections or inspections that we must do that require additional resources that we don't have. And so we have to reach out into industry and bring experts in. And that's what we use this money for. And we're short on this account. We've had a lot of FERC things come up. And so we need additional resources in this professional services. And we're not fully utilizing our technical services, which are specialized services that we get that are similar to these types of services, but would require hands-on like tree trimming. And so we've had things come up where we need these additional funds. So we're not asking for an overall increase in appropriation. What we are asking for is for us to shift our funds so that we better utilize them to meet these ongoing demands. I can give one example. This past winter, we had a landslide in the Silver's, Silver's watershed area, which is restricting our access to the Silver's powerhouse. And we require professional engineering services to come in and evaluate what we need to do to fix that. We are required by FERC to fix it and be pumped on doing that. And so we would use this type of money for that unforeseen event to make that evaluation for engineering services. Say, how do we have to fix this? And then we would, from that, come back if we need to, to sit with a capital item to make that repair to the road. So we've had a lot of those types of situations. So we're just going to be moving money from our technical services account, which we're not going to be fully utilizing this year in that particular type of work, and moving it over into our professional services where we need it. And again, not increasing requests out of our appropriate reserve or additional appropriation overall. Only a transfer within internal accounts.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Stavina? FERC likes to make us offers we can't refuse. They tell us what we need to do. They tell us what it's going to cost.
That's true.
And that's, and, and that's the limit, that's the limit of our input.
Thank you very much for your time.
Further discussion on, on budget transfer? Hearing none, let the full roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kissler?
Yes.
Benigan?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
And Matani?
Yes.
Motion passes. That takes care of new business. Prolet vouchers, Parnassus Books, one hundred and eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Need a motion, please.
Your Honor, I move for the approval of vouchers to Parnassus Books in the amount of a hundred and eight dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Kissler?
Yes.
Benigan?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
And Flora?
Yes.
Oh, and Matani?
Yes.
Motion passed. I'd be worried that you were going to shorten my life thirty cents. Let's make it ugly real fast. Moving on to management.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, I apologize. I have to deliver my report verbally. I didn't have time to get a write-up. I do want to announce that, as you know, Mark Hilson, our Public Works Director, is moving over to SEPA. And Amanda Robinson, one of our architects in Public Works Department, will be stepping in as acting interim manager while we search for Mark's replacement. We did have a SEPA board workshop, which will continue into September. The SEPA board is currently working on the strategic plan wherein we're reviewing things like low growth study, future resource needs for SEPA as well as generation. But that has not concluded and will continue into September prior to the publishing of a strategic plan, strategic plan update for SEPA. We had Jeremy, Mark Hilson, myself, along with Lacy and our lobbyist Ray Metachowski, met with our Deputy Secretary of ADOT, of Alaska DOT, and talked about more on the shore power MOA. And so I think that's something I shared with you back in February or March when we visited with our legislative team up, up in Juneau. Essentially, ADOT is looking at having some emissions funding available after October, which is the start of the federal fiscal year. So Jeremy and Mark are working on a scope of, a scope of work that we can propose to ADOT in order to pay for professional services to include things like either, essentially a phased plan for shore power in Ketchikan. So we can have, use those funds to pay for, I don't want to use the word shovel-ready, because it's mostly, we know what we need to do to get shore power there, but we just need those engineering documents and whatnot. If we could get that together, we would have shovel-ready projects. Ready, should the state pursue shore power statewide. And that is something that they are looking at. I believe they received sixteen million dollars in funding to promote shore power throughout Southeast. How that looks is not yet decided. So this is our first step on, should more funding become available, we can pursue that. So, so that was great news that we can actually have somebody else pay for those planning documents in order to get us ready. As we've all talked about in the past, our rate pairs cannot bear the burden of providing shore power to ships that are plugged in on the port of Ketchikan. We do need to look at other funding sources. That's not something that benefits our rate pairs. You also know that is a multifaceted issue in addition to running the infrastructure to the port and then building out the actual outlets. I won't, I know it's not an outlet, but putting in transformers and the outlets so those big ships can plug in. And who's going to own that? Is that port infrastructure? Is that electric infrastructure? Those are a lot of details we need to talk about. And then of course, the big question is, do we have power generation on the island in order to meet that demand, that daily demand? So it's a very multifaceted issue, but we'd like to get as much planning documentation done before we pursue an actual construction project. But in reality, we're going to have to pursue funding. So we want to have the paperwork in place, the plans in place, so we can pursue other funding outside of our rate pairs. So that was really good news. On September eleventh, our fire department will be having a nine eleven remembrance event. I believe it starts at five PM. And I don't know if the fire chief can correct me, but we will send you more information as it comes closer. Just mark your calendars that September eleventh in the evening, we will have a memorial event. K High Senior Day for, will be happening at the Borough on September thirteenth. So that's something they bring the seniors from K High to talk about government. And Casey Paxton with the Borough is coordinating that with, with our mayor and Borough Mayor and Borough officials. And finally, Southeast Conference is, both Lacy and I will be out for the conference September eighth to twenty-first. I'll still have my computer. I'll still be doing things as city manager, but Dan Lindgren has agreed to sit as acting manager for those three days that I'm gone. I'll be coming back early on Thursday in order to be here for our council meeting. And then Lacy will return after me when she finishes up on the conference.
Yes. Got two questions for the manager. First, replacement for Mark Hilson at Public Works. Are we going to look internally first?
I will, what I've been doing with department heads, I've been posting position internal and external. So I've, I've talked to a couple of internal employees and encouraged them to apply. And I've just made it my practice to do it all at once with the last department head searches that I've conducted.
To the mayor, second question. There's an issue downtown right now about crossing guards. I think I called you on that. By Mission Street, people are crossing any which way and almost getting hit. We don't want to have an incident where somebody gets hit or is killed. Has any solution been looked at for that?
We are currently staffing our crossing guards through overtime because we've lost so many. As school starts back and people leave for the season, we do lose a lot of crossing guards. I just chatted with Craig and Dan this morning, or this afternoon, if there are any solutions for that. Really, the problem is a staffing issue, but perhaps we can meet with PD and the court if we could think of anything else and see if we can come up with something more to put people out there.
Yeah, I was, I was going to follow up on that. I, I, I understand the police department's jam and otherwise, but we were having a similar problem down by my wife's store. And the police actually showed up for, for, to, to deal with another issue. And they were there for an hour or so. People stopped jaywalking across that dangerous section. So just, just the presence, if an officer can wander. So just, just the presence, if an officer can wander down the Mission Street just a little more often during the day, I think it really helps.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll definitely follow up with Jeff and Dan.
Yeah, on that note as well, it's, I've been in some close encounters. I was wondering if there is a way to supplement the port security so that we can take the port security and put into crossing guards. I know forty-ninth day is approved. I'm wondering costs, I mean, if we're already paying overtime and all this extra money, you know, what, you know, how is that cost analysis for on the port? Having them man the port and then having our port security man the streets. I know it's not ideal, but I'm just wondering if that's feasible. It is fairly, yeah, we've already had people hit this season. Yeah, it's only going to get worse.
That's an excellent suggestion. I'll definitely add that to the list.
Yeah, on another part of town, on the Third Avenue, coming up by KPU from the North End, North End. There is a truck whose butt has been out in the street for the last, I'd say, six to seven months. It's been parked the same way for over, forever. And with the school buses going down the hill, people have been trying to avoid that, and it's, it's tight because it looks like the truck's been hitting the rear end multiple times already. But it's been sitting like that. I see it every day, and it's just, I'm waiting for someone to veer into a bus and getting through that with the boat on the other side.
Okay, I'll definitely follow up with parking.
Ms. Ford? Yes, back up a little bit to the electrification aspect of your report. Sometimes I love the way government prioritizes things almost as much as I love Robert's rules. Councilmember Bradbury already alluded to this earlier in the conversation. Now we're having conversations about potential funding that might be available to be built upon what? Infrastructure that we really don't have a solid idea what it is. We just abandoned the Birth Three project, thankfully. Building new infrastructure, when you don't even, aren't even able and have the financial capacity to take care of existing infrastructure, defies common sense at every level. So if we're going to have conversations with the state or granting agencies, we have a port director, we have a public works director, we have city staff. I, I think at the local level, we've dialed this in pretty good. We know we have substantial needs on that port. And I'm really frustrated that we would be having a conversation about electrification because the industry wants it. Therefore, the government at the state level thinks, let's talk about that. So I would like consideration from staff on the next time you're talking about that, maybe ask, what are you building it upon? Because if that structure out there isn't solid, it really doesn't matter what else you do to it.
And Councilmember Flora, Mr. Mayor, that's an absolutely valid point, which is another reason why we don't want to be the one paying for those studies and those plans and investing our ratepayer money into something that doesn't, we don't know if it benefits our users. Ideally, we'd like to see that there's enough power generation or purchased power on port electrification that it subsidizes our demand in the winter. So for example, we hit peak demand in winter months, and if we have to build out for that peak demand for more generation, it would be a great thing if shore electrification paid for that because their demand is going to be in the summer, not when we need it, but when the ships need it. So if we can find a scheme wherein that's paid for, where we meet the needs of our users on somebody else's dime for the winter by having that available in the summer, so that, that would be a benefit.
There's some benefit there. Okay, thank you. Councilmore Gage, then Council, then Councilmore Bradbury, then Councilmore Miss.
I think, I think this is the chicken before the egg, or the egg before the chicken. And honestly, if, if they want shore power, then you help us with what we have to get fixed first, and then we'll talk shore power. But I agree, it shouldn't be on the community's dime.
Ms. Bradbury?
Since we're having talks with officials about, you know, these big ones that aren't necessary at this time, are we having those discussions about our port? And are, are we talking to them and huddying into them that our port is falling in the water, that we need assistance, we need help? Is there funding available? Are there earmarks available, you know, through the US senators? Like, are we, is there any effort going into things like that versus into this? I, I have to agree with the other councilmembers, like, it's great, it would cut down on emissions in our town. It would, you know, make it better when the ships are here. But, I mean, if we don't have a port for them to tie up to, then it doesn't really matter if we even discuss or if we get money for shore power option. I just, I guess I feel like there's a lot of effort going into all these other places, you know, talks and grants, but yet it's not going into our critical projects. I noticed that on the legislative list that we got as well, that that wasn't even on there at all either. But that's going to help pay for, you know, the other issues that we have in the community. So I just think it's kind of a, I feel like it's being put back onto the citizens and us to figure out how to finance a project that absolutely we cannot finance. So I just am curious, is there any effort going into securing funding to just keep our berth standing?
It is, the Parnassus, the only one I'm aware of that we put as a possible listing project for legislative consideration, once we get through that process of determining that it is viable project and we have costs. As far as the state's commitment to port development throughout the state, and if any staff is present that can correct me on that, I'm not aware. I know a lot of the federal money that came in for ports last year was focused on shipping and transportation. It had, and cruise ports were actually excluded from the federal language when they released that money. So I'm not aware of that. That is something that I think that we can have that discussion at our Southeast port communities of how important that port infrastructure is to, especially the publicly owned ports. Fragile owned ports, that's, that's a different story, but especially for publicly owned ports because I'm sure that need exists everywhere throughout Southeast.
Especially since they're trying to say that some of our ferry money should go to the port of, no.
To follow up on that, I think the wrong terms are being used when we talk about port. We're not talking about port development. We're talking about port stabilization, which is two totally different topics in terms of the outside world. And I guess, and I'll just be frank, I'm quite disappointed to hear that more effort isn't being put into this, especially with all of the talks that we've had over the last year in executive session and here at the table. I guess I'm just really, I understand we're busy, but how many meetings, private or special meetings have we had on this specific topic over the last year? But yet no effort is going into trying to secure funding outside of our taxpayers having to pay for it. So I guess I'm just, I'm really disappointed in that. I think there's availability, stabilization of ports across Southeast Alaska has been done. Nothing to the extent that we would probably have to do, but it's still there and it's worth the conversation. I mean, if you don't ask, the answer's already no, so what's the, it doesn't hurt to ask. So I guess I'm very disappointed, and I hope staff will, you know, start putting in a little bit more effort in that.
I've lost track. I think it was Ms. Kissler, then, then Mr. Gate, yeah, Mr. Gas, then we'll shoot that.
Yeah, the thing about the electrification is that it is, there is money out there right now for that. And I, yeah, I think taking care of ports should come from cruise ship dollars in my mind, not necessarily other taxes and things. I'm wondering if, if we put that electrification in there, can we structure it so that the rate is different so that they can pay for the infrastructure through their usage?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kissler, absolutely, you wouldn't have any ratepayer subsidizing another user. So it would be a consideration in our tariffs, and that would be very much down the road. But absolutely, you want to structure your tariffs such that the end user is paying their fair share.
That would pay for the infrastructure.
To be honest, I don't think there is any way for rates to pay for infrastructure. It would be for operations and maintenance.
For maintenance of infrastructure.
To actually build shore power, there, there's no way we could bond out and build into rates that kind of build out. That has to come from somewhere else, whether it be the lines or the state or the federal government. It, it simply has to.
Since we're weighing in briefly, I would just say, I kind of feel like we're taking some shots at the staff here. And I would just remind everyone that a lot of the focus on the issues that we're talking about with the port has been going into the negotiations over the last year or whatever on the deal that fell through. So just want to remind everyone of that before we get too hostile. And as far as this topic goes, I think, while I agree that the port infrastructure is most important, if there's money out there to put this infrastructure in for the shore power that's going to make KPU money that they need to make to lower the cost to residents, to do some of the CIPs that KPU's been needing to do for years and years, I think it's a good thing. So if we're looking into it, you've said numerous times that the citizens aren't going to pay for it. So I say my hat's off to you for that, and if, if there's money there to do it, let's do it. I think the more pressing concern which you touched on would be generation. My understanding is we actually had a couple of times where we, last year with no droughts during the winter, didn't have enough generation, had to turn on the diesels a little bit. And so obviously, we'd have to come up with a more big picture, more generation going forward. But if somebody else is going to pay for it, I say look into it. Thanks.
Mr. Tulli?
And I agree. I don't want to see the citizens of this city or this island pay even for matching funds if there's a grant out there. We cannot subject our citizens to that. And, you know, I'm disgusted with our Kuuzline partners really, and I make money off them. Most of us make a living off them. However, they need to be given an ultimatum and to step up first to help us with this infrastructure. It's not upon our staff. It's not upon our citizens. It's the ships, yes, they claim they bring in people, they revive our economy. But at the same time, they destroy our infrastructure. That infrastructure needs to be fortified and maybe give them an ultimatum. That's where I'm at.
Further discussion on the manager? Okay. Committee reports? Yes.
Um, as the city manager has touched on the SEPA workshop, I didn't feel comfortable writing a committee report because we only got through half of it. And I think if I presented the first half, everybody's going to be like WTF? And so I would like to wait until the second half, which is next, in two weeks, and then bring both of it because then it, I think it would be presented a little bit better than
In context.
just showing half and not anything else. So I apologize for not sending that out. I just didn't, I just didn't feel comfortable yet.
That's fine. See clerks, Phil?
Well, as you all are aware, we are in, running into the election mode. Actually, we received our ballots today. So we'll be doing our accuracy testing with our machines on Monday. We have a lot going on next week on the early voting. Before the next meeting on the eighteenth, the clerk's offices at the Borough and City Hall will be doing their early walk-in voting for two weeks up until October second, including absentee, which for folks that don't live in town, they can obtain an application off either website, the Borough website or the city, and request a ballot mailed to them. So I just wanted to kind of touch on that, that we will be doing the early voting in our respective buildings, not at a different location. But that's going to start September eighteenth and run through October second. And we'll just move on and see as we go. But we're posting on our, all these, as we move through on Facebook. There'll be, there's our notice ads in the paper. And in a couple of days, I'll be putting another ad in regarding the same topic about early in absentee where people can vote and come and. So it's getting down there. We got a couple of weeks and we're quite busy.
Mr. Tulli?
Don't beat me up, guys. The machines, are they updated and functional properly?
We received new machines last year, and our particular machines are not hooked to the internet at all. So we get our memory cards programmed, and then the both the clerks, as a matter of fact, on Monday, will be meeting and programming all seven machines with our logic and accuracy testing that we have. We have a test deck, and we test them all, and we get printouts, we sign documents, and they all go into our election files. But we do these with the test deck, and then it's a logic and accuracy test to make sure the machines are operating properly before they, and if there's any issues, they immediately get ahold of the company and we have those things corrected. There's four of us that work on that together, the two clerks and deputy clerks. And that is one thing that we want is to secure and accurate election and have it available. And so it's accessible to everybody to come and make a vote, whether it's early in person or at your precinct on Election Day, which is October third. So we do go to great lengths for the security issues because that has been a big deal. But our particular machines do not get hooked up, or we don't transmit information or anything. It just ballots are put in, it counts them. We have a canvas board that we'll need to check all of our numbers with our spreadsheet. So we have to cross-check on that as well. And then we'll certify it, and I'll bring back all those dates that will be coming up in October.
Any other questions to the clerk? See attorneys, Phil? Future head of this, spreader.
Um, I only got a couple of weeks left of this, so I got to get them all in. So I would like to review chapter five point four zero in reference to, I'm mainly looking at sightseeing vehicles within that chapter. Reason, I'm wanting to look at requirements for sightseeing vehicles and the fees for sightseeing vehicles. The reason I'm bringing this up is this summer, I think more than I've ever seen in the last thirteen years, we have a lot of sightseeing vehicles that are unmarked. They don't have any information on the side. They don't even have DOT numbers, which is not our realm. But they're blocking the road, they're sticking out, they're causing safety hazards for other drivers, pedestrians, blocking crosswalks, blocking parking on sidewalks even. They're just kind of out of hand, and one thing, like, I would love to call police department because I have a couple of times, but they're like, well, you know, do you know what company it is? Do you know this? You give the license plate, and then it goes through this whole thing. I just would like to see a requirement from the city, one, that you need to register with the city, but you also need your phone number on the side of your vehicle. It also would fall in line with the TBMP program that we are trying to support as well. And I don't know, this might be something that, you know, when they find somebody, they take over that. But I'm hearing a lot from the citizens that they would like to report these vehicles. They'd like to talk to people, but there's just no information on even who they are. Some of their license plates, you can't even really see either. So it's just becoming really difficult to identify, who do you contact for this, this issue to try to rectify? I know that, yes, today, actually, there was one blocking the crosswalk from, at the salmon ladder and sticking out. So just, it's getting worse and worse. It's having that stenman as well. So they already have to technically get a license through us to sightsee in this community. So I thought of just adding, put your phone number on the side, which any business typically would want that, would be just an easy requirement. So I have it already drafted. Just need the lawyer to look at it.
Let's get you.
Yeah, I would like, I would like, the, actually, two things. I would like to look at raising the fines on disabled parking.
I would like to look at raising the, uh, fines on disabled parking violations. And looking at figuring out a mechanism to actually enforce it. And, and this is a two-part thing. The second part is an education program that maybe you can get. A funding mechanism through KPU, um, on, because what, okay. This week alone, I've had, and it's not the people you think it is, but other people coming to me. About the issue of parking in the lines. And being told by management at several locations, and this should be a given. Everyone should know what the blue lines mean. The fact they don't and the law has been in place for over thirty years, I, I'm at a loss. Management told this person, I don't know what the big deal is. You must have talked to so-and-so. Because all she does is complain. And this person explained that the blue lines are so somebody with a wheelchair. And a wheelchair ramp can exist, exit their vehicle and re-enter their vehicle. Because the ramp goes out into the blue area. This person was unaware of that, didn't know that's what those were for. I, you know, every, every. I, when I think I'm not going to be amazed, I'm amazed. The other thing I would like, um, is the removal of the motorcycle ramp up at Cape Fox by the Ted Ferry Center. Move it over to the rocks where no one can park and get out of the car. Because what's happening there is cars are parking there, not motorcycles. And so they're blocking the wheelchair ramp, the one in the back, back door, the, the ferry. If anything, there's a, there's an actual car parking spot right next to the boulders. That no one can park in because you can't open your door. You could put a motorcycle one there.
There's already two other ones there. It's not a big deal.
Uh, yeah, it's just, that one is, people pick their car there.
Especially you have more.
Yeah, um, I also would like to re, or to review thirteen point oh eight. This has to do with, um, our charges to people who use the port. For water, wastewater, docking in general, um, and some other additional fees. Um, and also motor vehicle port access passes. Um, most of this is increasing the fees. I understand we're waiting on a harbor rate study. But, uh, if anybody through the conversations we've heard eighteen months is what we need to get ahead of it. Well, eighteen months is November first, so if we don't start this month, get the second reading in thirty days. We're then breaking into the eighteen months, which I know we don't have to follow it, but it's a courtesy thing. Um, and so if we want rates to be changed in twenty twenty-five, which I think they should. They haven't changed in a very long time. Um, we need to get going on this. I put in some factors. Obviously, um, people might think it's too high, they might think it's too low. Um, I just tried to find a way. So I would like to review that sooner rather than later, so that we can get moving on. Um, getting that and ensuring that in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, we're going to start, you know, getting some revenue, so.
Uh, I would like to see that we bring either as a discussion item or a work session. How we go about administrating our grants. And to see whether we can align them with the borough. And see that they are made seamless so that we don't, this last time, we didn't have an issue, but we've had issues in the past. So that we make sure that it's seamless and, uh, we are all on the same page.
Councilmember Matani, could I ask the clerk to.
Actually, we are working on that and I'll be sending out an email to staff. And I did want to include councilmember Bradbury, because that was one of her topics to meet after Southeast Conference to discuss that. And we've also have been speaking with, uh, Mr. Amalon over at the borough. Because he's set up their program that they're going to use next year. Because we post that application end of October. So that is really something that's at the top of our list and we've been talking about this week. And wanted to do, I just haven't sent out like a little poll on dates, but it would be during the day. Things are kind of slowing down, but we did want to have like city staff, borough. And of course, councilmember Bradbury, if she wants to be involved in that, because I know that was a big, something that you were wanting.
Yeah, yeah.
To deal with.
Yeah.
And so, just for your input, because you've got input, you were talking about it at the last meeting about MOAs and different things with it. I don't know if we just want to do humanitarian and then do the other, so these are things we want to, uh, discuss. And if we want to mirror the borough's application, maybe we have a different money process than they do. But at least put into play some, um, score sheets, different ways and things that the. Uh, they would have to do to get their funding a little stricter, because we really don't have that. We ask for their applications, we have our two meetings, they come and speak. And then we have a committee that kind of looks over everything they look at, but there's really not a set criteria to follow. And I think that's part of the problem. And if we can kind of, so you're absolutely correct. And it is something that we really want to be doing in the next few weeks. So that we can have at least our October application for that and get everything out.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, my, uh, big main, um, push with that is, um, taking out the opinion factor. Of giving out grants. We've seen in the past, if you like this one, you get it. If you don't. Um, and just eliminating that, uh, the borough just went through their first one of using a score sheet. It said, this is it. Everybody said, did they meet, did they meet this? Yes, this. If they didn't meet this, no. And it was scored, um, and took, there, I watched their whole process. And it was very streamlined, very equitable for everyone. Um, and so I just think maybe we can take some. But I don't know, we're going to discuss it and see what happens, so.
And then we can bring it back too, because maybe since staff would be doing a lot of that. Maybe it's, once we get all the criteria and applications, have a committee go through that scoring process. And, um, whatever else we want to put in, like, give the tools to give them to be able to. You know, the, the borough did though maximize their amounts, but it doesn't mean you get that amount. You have to work up to that amount. So you may get twenty-five, you may not. Just depends on how you scored and if you meet their. And we will be looking at all that stuff, so I know Lacey's been talking with Mr. Amlon too, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other gen items.
Can I get one comment? It's not necessarily a future gen item, but just something that, since we're all on the topic of parking and driving and. Complaints of that nature, uh, I did notice there's a particular tour company that's frequenting the bypass with large vans. Daily, multiple vans full of tourists and making stops. And I really don't like to be the guy that grunts about drivers and parkers. But, I think, it, the one thing that we owe the community, the citizens, when it comes to this is. You know, the agreement is the bypass is off limits, my understanding, in from the code or the charter, whatever. So, um, I noticed that I used to bypass multiple times a day and I noticed it on almost a daily basis. So, maybe just a little, I don't even know who enforces that, but just a, well, observant report, I guess.
If we can get, I think with Abby's putting the name and phone number, at least you could say, hey, so.
This one's got the name plastered broadly across.
But if you let us know, because I know somebody else that's taken pictures and we've contacted them. And, um.
I, I have noticed that van is not around. When the, every so often, the police park in the, uh, um, the Rainbow Trail parking lot. And the van doesn't go up there then. But what they seem to know when you guys aren't there, because that's when they show up. And so, uh, next time I see them, I will let you know which one it is. But you actually follow me up on the other, that point, yeah. I, I see a lot of vans up there that aren't marked and I'm pretty sure I know what they're doing. It's like it's on drug, maybe. Is, is, is that, you know, is, is, is they're taking tours and once again, we don't know. Because it doesn't stay on the side of the van, you have no idea what, it could just be some random drug user as well, but.
We do, we issued a hundred and ninety-five stickers, window stickers this year. Now, that doesn't include, that includes the taxis. Um, there are some duplicates because some people have lost theirs, but the, they'll, and we keep track of all their plates. So if we get a call into the plate and they're not on there, then I'm either down on the border. I contact the police department because they're operating illegally. But it is hard when there's no name or phone number on them.
And just to follow, that's why I wanted to review five point four zero, because there isn't a lot of, um. A lot of these things. I think it's known to that or it's just everybody's done it. But it's not down and we're finding a lot of people skirting, skirting all of this and paying the fees and having all of that, so.
I'm sure that aren't even, got to win. We issue a sticker for all them and they pay a fee, they get a DOT mechanics report. And they have a certain requirement on their liability, but if you've got somebody down there that hasn't gone through the process. You've got people in a vehicle that may not be insured or may not be mechanically sound. And so, um, those things do need to be corrected and it's, you know, it's hard to monitor that when the vehicle's down there. And I, I get it, I walk down there on my lunch checking out plates, because I'll have my public vehicle list and say. Oh, like I'll make sure they got their window sticker, but can't do that every day. And like you said, you've got these other guys that kind of know when and where to be at certain times. So it's hard to enforce it, but hopefully we can help with that the next year.
Any other future gen items? Mayor and council comments, uh. Mr. Gage. Mr. Gass.
Just want to say a little bit about the other night, um. You know, I didn't feel that, myself very strongly included. I just felt that we got a little off topic. We were kind of all over the place. And I, I think we, or I'll speak for myself, I owe it to the citizens to be a little more focused. A little more prepared. I just didn't feel that was a very fruitful meeting. Um, yeah, but for me personally, I did want to say I really struggled with the decision. Because, uh, both points, both sides were totally valid. Uh, on one hand, cer, what certain people were saying is totally correct. Uh, it's unacceptable that people that live in that neighborhood with kids or businesses don't feel safe. And, uh, it's a problem that has been growing and growing and we've tried to handle it, but it's only gotten worse. Um, so, I think in the long term, some sort of a different structure, some changes are needed to be made. Um, maybe I'm a little soft, but you know, I got a tour of the facility. And, uh, you know, midday downstairs in the room where the folks hang out during the day. And there was at least twenty-five people. And it kind of pulls on your heartstrings to see those folks. And at the same time, all I could think about was if we shut them down immediately. Without a time for a transition, all those folks are going to be in the areas that we heard complaints about. At the mall and at Madison and in doorways and on sidewalks and in yards, et cetera. So, uh, I'll be honest, I lost a bit of sleep over my decision. I wasn't happy with it. But I didn't think at the time there was a better immediate decision. But I think going forward, I think everyone agrees some changes need to be made and I certainly think that. So, just wanted to kind of say that, I guess my thoughts on that. And, uh, I definitely think we need to make some changes as we go forward though.
Let's just look.
Uh, yeah, there was no good decision to be made on Tuesday. You're absolutely right. Um, I, I think our, our biggest problem is we need some, we need some place other than a holding. Area for these people that need help. We need some kind of, um, mental health, uh, help. And, uh, we need, there has to be some kind of solution for the police. Having to sit at the hospital for hours. I, I just, I mean, what in the world? It's just, uh, it's just frustrating. It's just frustrating. There's no, no good answers. Um, uh, all we can do is, is try the best we can. And, and, um, not, not, not try and enable too much and. But yeah, we, we can't pull the rug out from underneath them. Uh, congratulations to, uh, our new, um, officer, uh, to their new positions. Um, I'm excited about that new, uh, reserve position. I think that's a great idea and that will help to, um, support the police force as it is. And to bring up hopefully some new members from our better city. That maybe not, might not move somewhere else, might find a, a passion here in town and, and help us all out. So I'm excited about that.
Mr. Finley.
I want to express my admiration to the individuals or admiration for the individuals. Who stood, uh, before the council this evening and actively stood publicly to receive the mayoral proclamation. Regarding National Recovery Month, not only for the paths that they are following. But for their willingness to put their faces forward in this public forum. For, uh, to humanize a struggle that is too often reduced to statistics. Uh, and is too often stigmatized. And I think it ties a little bit into, um, our discussions from Tuesday. Um, which, you know, we, we talked at length then, we've acknowledged again tonight. What difficult situations arise from substance use and misuse, houselessness and homelessness and so on. But to have the courage to come to a city council meeting and to publicly express the effort that you are undertaking. To improve your lives and to become contributive members of, uh, of our community. I think takes a tremendous deal of courage, uh, especially knowing the way that that kind of use and misuse of substances. Tends to be disregarded or dismissed, so. And to, I can't remember who of the speakers spoke to the fact that we've probably all witnessed or experienced. Uh, some form of addiction. Um, I certainly have seen it in people close to me. So it, it, it means a lot, uh, that, uh, that those folks would be here and that they'd put their faces forward. So I commend them for their courage and I wish them well in their path forward.
Mr. Matani.
First, kudos to the police department, fire department. They are so stretched out, but they still do their best. To serve our communities. So kudos to them. Second, thank you to management team for keeping us together, keeping us straight. And helping us get through our meetings and preparing our meetings. Yeah, I commend. The folks that came out that are on the way to recovery, to present themselves in person as faces. Bravely, and I also commend those who have recovered and are helping people recover. I will strongly urge all of us to go out and support this, stomp out this stigma march. And understand that we are all human beings and sometimes we fall through the cracks and it could be any one of us. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Um, yeah, I don't have anything specific. I mean, all the council members have commented some good points. Um, I do just want to extend, uh, mayor, myself and staff are going to Southeast Conference. If there's anything that you guys want us to look into, talk to others, state officials or, um, anything of that nature that's on your mind. That's related to Southeast Alaska, please let us know so that we can do our diligence there to ensure that we're, you know, covering everyone's, um, aspects here. So please send an email, reach out, um, so that we know, I don't, what direction maybe, some others maybe have, so.
Okay, so coming up, we have, uh, two executive sessions, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Do you have anything more?
Well, yes, see, see, if you say nothing in your honor three or four times in a row, I have to sue you.
Okay.
Got to go now.
Good points, all. Um, going to acknowledge the industry for once. Since I probably am the guy that has my knee in their neck rather than anybody here. I'm out north every day. A lot of times, multiple times a day. Pretty vocal before the season about smoke pigs. They call them buses, gross polluters. And I got to say, for whatever reason, and I don't know what the reasons are, it doesn't really matter. I've seen like two the entire year. There's a lot more newer buses. There's a lot of buses that aren't trailing noxious clouds of toxic smoke. So quite frankly, I think that's a positive step on their part that deserves a little bit of acknowledgement. Beyond that, your honor, I think I'm good to go.
Double bikers, you're surprisingly low emission. I'm not sure I'll say if they're dodging all hot wheels, but okay, we have two executive sessions tonight. Actually, we have three technically. We, we, we already voted on the one, so isn't it? So how about we take a, actually, do we have table? Let's, let's, let's take a vote to go into the first executive session, then we'll take a five minute break.
Your honor, I move the city council to declare it is in the best interest of the city to meet with Police Chief Jeffrey Walls regarding employment matters in executive session in accordance with Catch Can Municipal Code two dot zero four dot zero two five A one and two, which may involve matters the immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city and discussion of subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion.
Second.
The second discussion. We'll call the roll and we'll take a five minute break.
Kissler.
Yes.
Madani.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Redberry.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
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 And Finney.
Yes.
Move your best.
Yep.
We're back in session. The council met with Police Chief Jeffrey Walls and the city manager. A discussion. Moving on to item 15B, rest for executive session, collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the International Brotherhood of Local Workers, Local 1547. Chair Wernicke motion.
Your Honor. Move the city council to declare that consistent with the city manager's recommendation, is it in the best interest of the city to discuss strategies relative to negotiation of a new collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ketchikan and IBW to replace the existing contract expiring December 31st, 2023? In executive session, accordance with that recommendation, the city council will go into executive session in accordance with KMC 204025A1 to discuss said negotiations and subjects, the knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and upon the city's ability to negotiate favorable labor agreements.
Second.
Move the second.
I'm a member of the IBW and the attorney has advised me that I cannot participate, so.
You get to go home early.
See you guys.
Wait, don't we have one more after this?
No.
No.
No, we'll put that in consent.
Can we add one?
Yeah, if you need to add one.
Can we add one for him?
No, we're going to require that he sit out here.
From here on out, we expect him to wait while we go to the first.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay, shall we?
Clerk, clerk, hold the rule.
Gage. Yes. Bradbury, yes. Flora?
Yeah.
Matani?
Yes.
Hissler?
Yes.
Then again?
Yes.
Let's just, let's, again.
Yeah.
Let's go back in there. Let's go back in there.
Yes.
We met with staff to discuss labor negotiations.